If we could come to order, please. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board. And the opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 in the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2017 Agenda Resolutions of the regularly scheduled meetings of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and is to be maintained throughout the year by transmitting a copy of such schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, Times, Trentonian, and Comcast Media. A copy has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the second day of December 2016. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution appeared in the December 9, 2016 edition of the Princeton Packet. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Capizole?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Crumiller?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Spruill?
Here.
Mr. Texarney?
Here.
Mrs. Trotman?
Mrs. Ullman?
Here.
Mrs. Gunning?
Here.
Mr. Williamson?
Here.
Ms. Wilson? We have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any announcements, anyone? No? All right. Well, then, let's move on to the hearings for this evening. We're working on the master plan. We'll start with the 2017 reexamination report, and then the second item will be the circulation element. And let me remind all of you that you should have a second draft of the resolution for the reexamination report at your place here. The first one was found to have an error in it, so... And with that?
Wait, let's get clear on what... What did you just say?
I said that you should have at your place a copy of the resolution.
Oh, the resolution, okay.
Okay.
And the draft that we're looking at, is that dated 10/17/17? Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone? All right. Mr. Solo, do you want to start us off on the... Tonight?
Thank you, and good evening. What I'd like to do is just very briefly run through the 2017 reexamination report that's in front of you tonight. Guess I should point out that there is a require... It's not picking me up. There is a requirement for public notice, just as there is for any master plan amendment. We've complied with that notice. It was in the newspaper. We have sent copies of the reexam to the county and surrounding communities? And surrounding communities, thank you, Eileen. The state, under the municipal land use law, requires that the planning board prepare and adopt a master plan reexamination report every 10 years. The last reexamination was adopted in 2007. The document has been reviewed by the board's master plan committee, which met on October 11th, to review the reexam report. And after making some changes, they recommend that the board consider its adoption tonight. The reexam follows the general format prescribed in the municipal land use law. There are five basic questions or topics that were asked to discuss in our reexamination. The first is to discuss the major problems and objectives relating to land development at the time of adoption of the last reexam. And there is a discussion on that on pages three and six in the report. The second, it asks us to discuss the extent that these problems have been reduced or increased, and that can be found on pages seven through 11. The third asks us to review what, if any, significant changes in the policies forming the basis for the master plan have occurred. And we do that on pages 12 through 18. The fourth discusses the specific changes recommended for the master plan or development regulations. That's on pages 19 and 22. I should point out, I think that's really the meat of what this reexam is. If you look at that section four, you'll see it's making recommendations either for additional studies in the master plan, or specific zoning or land development changes. And you may want to... We may want to spend some time discussing that. And the fifth, it asks us to discuss if there are any recommendations for a formal redevelopment plan, and that's at the end of the report. Not surprisingly, I'm sure to most of you, a lot of the issues that we're dealing with today, we were dealing with in 2007, you'll see in the report, in both what were we dealing with in 2007 and what are we dealing with now. It was a shortage of vacant, developable land to meet the many competing needs in the community. It was providing affordable housing. It was providing opportunities for middle-income housing, meeting the housing needs of a growing senior population, maintaining a range of housing opportunities to ensure a diverse population at all ages and economic levels, ensuring an economically healthy downtown and shopping center, balancing institutional needs with neighborhood protection, and protecting the community's tax base, limiting traffic impacts from regional traffic, ensuring that redevelopment is compatible with existing development, and then finally promoting sustainable development practices. Those were themes in 2007. I think they continue today. There are probably some nuances, and we discuss that in the report as to how they've changed. A good example would simply be focusing on senior housing, which was a hot topic in 2007. And you'll see in the report, it sort of says, "We're really focusing on providing appropriate housing for all ages and all levels of mobility," as opposed to just senior housing, as just one example. The report also breaks down and discusses by topic each of those questions in terms of the master plan itself. So you'll see there's a land use section, a housing section, a circulation section, a utility section, a community facility section. We've combined open space recreation and conservation, a historic preservation section, and then dealing with regional relationships, which is really looking at what are our neighbors doing that impact us, and what are we doing that may impact our neighbors. With that, that's a brief overview. I don't know if the board has questions. Again, the report was reviewed in depth by the master plan subcommittee, and along with their recommendation, we would hope that you would want to adopt it. We are required also to hold a public hearing, so I think maybe if the board has questions, Chairman, we would take board questions and then go out to the public and then come back to the board.
Okay. Board? Yes, Senate?
Yeah, so I have... I've reviewed the reexamination report and have prepared some semi-written comments. And I guess I want to respect the master plan subcommittee, and, you know, I don't mean to cause any trouble. But I do have some questions that I want to get out there. So I guess the first thing that I want to mention, I have actually a few notes, it might take a little bit, is... The first question I have is whether it's possible to create a new master plan. Was that brought up at all? Is that an option? I mean, perhaps it would make sense to start fresh and, you know, have a new document. Current one's over 20 years old. You know, it's a little messy. It has all these revisions and dates, and it's not the easiest to read. And, you know, I guess in terms of how it's presented on the website, it's, you know, every element is separate, you know, it could potentially be consolidated into one. That's kind of a, you know, organizational issue. And, you know, I think that, you know, it's good to... I mean, it would be great to have a 21st century document. I feel like right now, you know, we're in a new century, first of all, but, you know, a lot of cities are actually moving towards more modern documents. Trenton actually happened to just go through a complete overhaul of their master plan, and it's actually a fantastic document. It also actually incorporates new technology. They have a fantastic website. It's called Trenton 250. It's a little complex, but, you know, I think that it's headed in the right direction. So, yeah, I think that, you know, I want to put that out there first, but I also want to suggest that, you know, if a new plan be created, that, you know, sustainability and resilience is sort of a core element of that master plan. So just want to put that out there first.
Jenny?
Well, I wanted to follow up with a question about... Lee, I don't want to... Or I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but that... I saw the Trenton 250 website today, and I was wondering if that... What are the requirements for a master plan, and does that website... Like, how does it fit in with the law?
Right.
Because a lot of this is required by law. I mean, and then there's also, you know, do we want to... I mean, that... I'm sure that... I mean, that was humongously expensive. That's one of the... That's what I... When I was looking at it, I said, "It's great." But I'm also aware of how... I wondered if they hired a consultant, or how they actually achieved that, and how much it cost.
I think... Take a step back. Keep in mind first, the reexam is just that. It's not intended to be a new master plan. I think if... After you have your discussion, if you wanted to include a recommendation in that section four that we consider doing a new master plan, that's up to you. In the past, we've always considered it a rolling master plan, and you'll see when you look at, like, on the first page, the housing element, while it's old, was updated in 2008. We all know that's going to be updated, because it has to be as part of the court process that we're involved in. We've amended the land use element in 2009, open space and recreation in 2011. We changed from a regional to a planning board in 2013. We did update the circulation element, which we're going to be updating again, but that was done in 2013. The historic element, more specifically for the borough, but was updated in 2013. So we have, and while you're right, it references the 1996 master plan. We have, over those years, updated, whether it's an entire element or sections. But I think it's a fair point, if that's what the board wants. I am also familiar with the Trenton 2050. It was a very expensive proposition.
Right.
And it's, you know, a major undertaking, you know, but if that's what you want to recommend, and mayor and council want to fund it, I'm sure we can. But that doesn't prevent, if the board says we really should consider, you know, reviewing the whole document, or updating the whole document, or creating a new one. I mean, that's fine, and that's why I had said in the beginning, focus on four, section four, which is, here are the recommendations. Most of them are much more specific. But lots of towns in their reexam, they make a specific finding that the document is fine, or that they should update, and then they list the specific elements that they think need to be. So with that, I'll leave it for the board members to decide.
Yeah. If I can respond real quickly. I mean, so I'm familiar with the Trenton 250 plan. You know, Group Melvin, this planning firm, did it... It was pretty pricey. I don't know the exact price. But I'm not necessarily suggesting that we do what they did. I think that we could probably do something much more affordably. I think that, you know, the current master plan isn't awful. I think that we've been updating it. I'm not suggesting that, you know, it's horrible and we need to redo it completely. I think that, you know, there's certainly, you know, good pieces of it. A lot of it's good. But I think that, you know, it could probably use some refreshing, and a lot of the same stuff might be in the new version, but, you know, it could be an updated version. I don't know if anybody else wanted to comment.
David?
I actually just want to ask a specific question of Lee. I feel like there's some reference in this reexam report that does talk about the intention to create a new sustainability element of the master plan, which does not exist currently. Do you know, is that in this document?
It is.
Yeah, it should be.
But actually, I should clarify. That's another thing I was going to comment on. So the PEC is working on that green building or environmental sustainability element. And so, you know, that would be a new element to the master plan, which is... That element is part of municipal land use law and, you know, is an official element. But actually, you know, through discussion and through this process of creating it, we've kind of realized that sustainability and resilience should be incorporated in all aspects of the master plan, which it is to a certain degree. But I think that we would like to see it more. And so actually, I have a list of things that, you know, I feel like could be added to it. And obviously, you know, this is very, you know, of course, very rough. You know, it would have to be reviewed in detail, but I have some general comments about that.
Yeah, I would like to suggest that that should be part of the charge to PEC. As they're developing the sustainability element, they should also be referencing changes to any other element that needs to be changed for coordination purposes. I mean, you know, this is something that came up in regard to West Drive, where there were conflicting parts of the master plan. The circulation element was saying it should be created as an automotive bypass to Alexander Road, but the environmental section was saying that it should not be. So, you know, that's the sort of thing we want to avoid. And so I think it certainly should be an important part of the task that PEC is undertaking is, when they come with a recommendation for a sustainability element, it should incorporate recommended changes to the other elements for coordination purposes.
Absolutely. I completely agree. And I think that that's one thing that I kind of realized when preparing this. You know, it's one thing to create a new element with, you know, all great content about sustainability, but, you know, it's another thing to see how it matches, or it's incorporated in the whole entire master plan, but it's also another thing to see how the master plan relates to itself. And I think that's why that was the impetus for thinking about how we can potentially refresh the whole entire master plan, or make sure that there's consistency throughout the master plan. So, yeah, I completely agree. So... Any other comments?
Other comments, questions?
Just so that, as I scribble down notes, is there a consensus then to probably under... On page 22, under I, I think the words were to look at or consider a new master plan that incorporates sustainability and resiliency, something... I didn't catch everything you said, but that seemed to be the flavor.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I understand that this is a reexamination report, and, you know, this is just something that we have to do for maintenance, and... But I think that it's important to, I guess, include, so that way we kind of have that in there to move forward.
Maybe the word "refresh" or something? I mean...
I have a question. So you anticipate that as elements are brought before, that we infuse sustainability into elements as they are being reconsidered? Because Wanda, at our council planning session, identified two elements that she believed needed refresh sooner than later. The utility element, I think, and the conservation element.
Yeah.
So I think rather than starting all... Is that the intention? So as individual elements are brought up, we should infuse sustainability into them?
Yeah, or potentially do a complete audit of the master plan and see how it can be added to the master plan. And that's something that I think that the PEC can do, and then we can bring to this board and review in terms of... That's assuming that we, you know, stick with the current master plan and we, you know, just decide to update it and amend it, as opposed to completely overhaul it.
Right. Can I just ask?
Yeah.
You keep talking about the PEC working on this. When do you think it's going to come to this board?
Well, so I've... We've prepared a draft of the green building and environmental sustainability element. It's still in the works. You know, we spoke... I spoke to Gail. Gail came to one of our meetings, and we were talking about potentially having it in front of this board by early next year. But, you know, if we decide to incorporate elements or pieces of that into the whole entire master plan, it might be different. So I think that maybe that will be a different thing to review.
Further comments from the board? Anybody else have a list? Go ahead, Ted.
I just have... My gut reaction is that, based on what you said, it seems like an enormous undertaking for the reason it would be kind of cool, you know, to do it, but I'm not hearing... You know, I would like to have a more in-depth conversation, I guess, about what the failures are of the master plan that we have right now that would justify the kind of investment of effort that you're talking about.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Porter?
Just an observation. I guess the land use law talks about different elements, but it doesn't mean that they're separate. So if there's a sustainability element, it's part of the master plan, and each of the elements should be read in that context. It's just a different chapter of the same book. There shouldn't be inconsistencies, but it doesn't mean, I don't think necessarily, that there's a sustainability element, and then in each separate section, there's its own sustainability. That is, it's already unified, so I don't think that's different from what you're saying. But just an observation that we have a site plan section in the land use, and we also have a zoning, and they have to be read together.
Right.
Just as a sustainability element and a housing element would be read together.
Yeah.
So I think the concept is there, and that that would be... Unless there's a different way to look at it, I think that that's there. And we should always look at the elements as if they were part of a unified document.
For sure.
Yes, Jenny?
I also, at the very least, I agree with you that it's not user-friendly, and I don't know if you're aware, that we are overhauling our municipal website right now, and I'm on that website committee, so I'm going to, you know, put that on my to-do list to make sure that the master plan is in a very... In a more usable format. Because I... And with maybe little explanations for the titles, because it's hard to fix... I think it's hard to figure out. I'm even on the planning board, and sometimes it's hard to figure out, what does that mean?
Right.
2007 reexam. What does that mean? So I will pledge to do that.
Great. Yeah, no, I completely agree. I think that, you know, thinking about user experience and ease of reading is important. I mean, you know, I'm...
And I could use your help, too, if you wanted to...
I will be happy to.
Okay.
Yeah, but, you know, I am a professional planner, and for me, sometimes it's hard to understand. I mean, I think that it's important that, you know, planners and the board are able to clearly read it, but I think that the general public should be able to read this document, which is really key. Does anybody have a... I can go through the list real quickly of things. It's not that long.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah? Okay. So, you know, in terms of land use, you know, speaking of ease and user experience, I think that, you know, zoning code is another thing that... I mean, that's not something that would be done in the master plan, but thinking about, you know, future updates to land use and the subsequent zoning updates, I think that that's important to make clear. I guess making sure... Investigating conformity of existing properties with the zoning to make sure that as many properties are conformed to the zoning code or the zoning districts. And then, you know, updating the zoning to be more in sync with those properties. That's something that I recently worked on with the municipality. Updating the zoning code to promote density in town and on transit, which I think it sort of does already. I don't know if we've looked into potential transit of development rights here in town. I don't know if it makes as much sense here as in other, maybe more agricultural communities or rural communities. Look into a conservation easement or overlay for environmentally sensitive areas. I know that that's a huge undertaking, but something that we've talked about in the past and could potentially be in the master plan. Doesn't have to necessarily reflect in the zoning, per se, but could be there. Create a zone for agriculture that would allow for para-urban agriculture, which... Para-urban agriculture? So right now, the zoning for agricultural land is within the park zone, and I think that potentially, you know, having something in the master plan that talks about changing the zoning to allow for agriculture and para-urban agriculture would be good. And do you want me to clarify what that is, or did you want to move on?
I know what you're talking about. I just... I'm trying to fit it into reviewing the reexam.
Okay. Well, maybe I can just send these comments to the board and to Lee.
I think they're very valuable comments.
Okay.
I think it's something that the master plan committee or the board as a whole could discuss.
Okay.
But I'm not sure it's all tied into this reexam tonight, so...
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, that's okay. I agree. No problem.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah. I'm sorry I didn't bring this up earlier, but on page 20, on... It talks about assisted living facilities, and it says... Now I can't find it. I just was looking at it. Oh, number five on page 20, it says... Or it's... Yeah, it says, "Princeton should review the need for continuing care retirement communities in Princeton. Given the shortage of large vacant tracts and the ordinance requirement to utilize the underlying FAR, the likelihood of a CRC being constructed is remote." And I just... I just don't want to do anything to discourage continuing care retirement communities. I feel like a lot of people... I've heard from one of those in our town, so could we just take that out? Just remove number five?
Well, I think that's a statement of the current situation with the ordinance as it exists. We have an ordinance that permits CCRCs, but in the light of case law that we've been through, the underlying zoning applies, so it becomes not... Well, "it's remote" is correct. Yeah. If the issue is to reexamine the ordinance provision so that it makes it less remote, that would be fine. But taking it out, it doesn't add anything. This is a statement of what now exists. It's really difficult to have a CCRC under the current ordinance. If the idea is to encourage a CCRC, then maybe the thrust of it should be to examine the existing CCRC ordinance to make it more feasible to build one.
Okay. Well, then, maybe we should just change it to Princeton should review the continuing care ordinance.
That's fair. That's fair.
And maybe, in chance, say, "The likelihood of a CRC being constructed under the current ordinance is remote." So just make it more clear that it's...
Well, I think really, if the thrust is that we should review the existing ordinance to make it more feasible.
Right.
That could be the statement instead of the one that's here.
Yeah, we could simply say Princeton should review the zoning standards for continuing care retirement communities, period.
Okay, thank you. If everybody else agrees with that.
David?
Yeah, there were a couple of minor edits that were distributed to us after this draft was created, and there was one more that I had suggested. I don't want to take this out of order, but I was wondering when we were going to review those, or... I'll mention the one that I had pointed out in particular to Eileen was the fact that the Providence Line Road Bridge is still in this document a couple times as...
I think that's in the circulation.
Circulation.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Never mind.
Too much paper. Anyone else? If not, let's hear from the public and then go back to the board discussion. So let me open this to the public. I'm going to ask you to come up to the microphone and speak into it. Give your name.
................................................................................................................................................... can be involved in a reexamination plan and in some, as you know, sometimes it can be very extensive. In, I looked at the case law and one of the leading cases that talks about this described it as "The master plan review envisioned by the land use law involves extensive public review and analysis by consultants and experts, hearings, general public notice, and in most cases, extensive publicity and notoriety." So obviously, there's a spectrum. It can be done with, in that particular case, I think there were 24 work sessions and many public hearings. I think we're at the minimal end of the spectrum here. And I think this is a big thing. This is a 10-year reexamination, so I appreciate the thought that the board is giving to it, but I am a little concerned that the public is only having this one opportunity and because of the timeframe, this is really it. Turning to specifics, I, you know, I think there are probably a number, any number of comments that people can make. I just picked out a couple of things. I noticed that in the plan in the housing, talking about in 2007, the 2007 re-examination, said that, you know, it's important that we have more affordable and middle-income housing in town. This is a goal that we want to strive for, but that the problem is finding sufficient suitable land. Later, when they're talking, when you're talking about what has been accomplished in the open space section, you note that in 2007, you set a goal of 25% open space, but that in the interim, we've now achieved 27.5% open space. So, hooray. Are we done? Well, apparently not, because this plan says we're going to keep on acquiring more. But it doesn't say why, it doesn't say how much, and I really think those are questions that we should be asking ourselves. If we, you know, what's the balance? As you were saying, Alan, the plan as a whole and the whole has to work together. So if the problem in getting the housing goals that we want is that there's no land, does it really make sense to keep preserving land for open space and taking it, making it unavailable for housing? Where is that balance? That conversation, we need to have that conversation. Certainly, the board needs to wrestle with that. It's not an easy conversation, but it's something we have to think through.
Can you tell me exactly, are you, did you, are you talking about a specific passage in this?
Yeah. Well, I'm talking about more than one passage, but yeah, I mean, we talk, we talk about what was the goal set in 2007 and it was housing, affordable, middle income.
Right.
And then, the way this is structured, it talks about what was accomplished in that intervening period of time. And then it talks about, well, what are our recommendations for the going forward? So our recommendation going forward is to keep on acquiring more open space.
No, I just wondered where that was, because I missed it.
Yeah. Let's see. I think it is on page 22. It says something like, "Identify properties to be acquired or preserved," which certainly sounds like we're going to keep on acquiring properties.
But it does say, "A review of Princeton's open space policies, goals, and objectives should be undertaken."
Right, right. And that's what I'm saying. Well, that's what I'm-
So that is in there, right?
It is in there, but what I'm saying is they need to be thought about together. You know, I mean, we all like the open space.
Right.
I love the open space. Luckily, I'm retired and I actually get to enjoy the open space, but maybe we have enough. Maybe, maybe, you know, where, what's the balance is what I'm saying. And I think that's the kind of issues that come up in a master plan conversation that we, you know, we don't have those conversations very often. And this is the opportunity. The land use law provides for this reexamination periodically, just so that this, you know, boards will do that and not just look at things as individual isolated issues, but actually look about, at it as a totality. And so I'm just pointing this out as one example where it struck me that there was perhaps a conflict in these goals or at least a mismatch. So there are others. I'm not, I didn't attempt to be comprehensive because I didn't want to stand here for a long time. But, but that's the point I'm making. So I realize you're doing this in a very expedited schedule and this is the public hearing and the plan is going to be published later in the month, so it's not all going to happen tonight, but I'm urging you to have that process and to do that. I appreciate very much your comments, because I think, I think that that's exactly what the board needs to be doing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to the reexamination report?
I'm a little confused by the scope here. Some of you have been talking about housing. Is this a discussion about circulation?
No, this is, this is the reexamination report. The circulation discussion is going to be the next section of the meeting.
Will you entertain comments about circulation at this time?
Sure.
Okay. My name is Mike Suber. I'm a longtime resident of Princeton.
Well, are you going to speak about the re-exam?
Concerning circulation plan.
No, I think probably-
We're talking about that next. First, we're talking, and then we're talking about recircu, about circulation.
Is that later this evening?
Yes.
It's the next topic on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
It's coming later.
It's the second item on the agenda.
Soon.
Soon. Is there anyone who does want to speak about the re-exam? Everyone else is here for circulation. Is that right? Okay. Seeing none, let me close this portion of the meeting and return it to the board. I'm sorry, did you, I-
First, I want to thank the board for their work on both the master plan originally, since I'm sure many of you were around when that happened, and then also the re-exam.
And I'm just going to ask, to the extent that you're giving testimony for you to acknowledge you're testifying truthfully or your thoughts, thank you.
Yes, these are my thoughts. I testified to that, yes. I guess mine is more of a comment that the town is really looking at a major change and a major positive change because of our requirements to have affordable housing. We don't know what that is yet, and yet we're passing something called a master plan. And I find that totally incongruous. I think that the requirement for affordable housing is going to be the biggest change that happens in this town in a very long time. And I think in order for that to really be taken seriously, we shouldn't be calling this a master plan with such a gap in it. I know we have, we talk about it here, but we all know that that's not really, we're not really considering what's going to be happening. And I think at the very least, it should be noted in the plan that we need to come back and extensively talk about that. And I would say that I think rather than one public meeting, I would like to see the board make a commitment tonight to an open process and a major discussion about what happens when we know what our affordable housing commitment is going to be.
You know, I thought there was a reference in the-
Well, can I, are you going to explain what we're doing? I mean, because we're not really, we're looking, we're making a list of things that is basically what, this isn't the master plan, this is the re-exam. It's a list of our recommendations for what we should do with the master plan, for what changes we should make, what improvements we should make, correct?
You're correct.
And so, for the housing element, we're not, we're, I think we all know that we need, we're going to have to look at the housing element, but we're not actually-
I guess, I guess my point is more specific than that. It's saying that, what I'm saying is that this is the most significant thing that's going to happen in a master plan. And it's really noted as if it's just one of the, one of the many items. It doesn't have the level of really importance really put forward that I think is necessary in this document. It should be saying we need to be coming back and looking at this as a major issue. And then I'm commenting that I would like to see that process be a major open process in which there is a great deal of community input about putting the plan in place, not questioning the plan, because what we need in this community is more affordable housing and we need to have a plan to do that and we need to be moving on that as quickly as possible. So I want to just make that as a recommendation.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Perhaps if Mr. Solo could review the steps that this board and council will have to take once we get the number from Judge Jacobson, that might be helpful, since we do mention in here, you're right, that we just say, "Develop zoning strategies for providing and integrating affordable housing." Oh, I actually caught a typo there. It says affordable housing twice. Affordable housing, affordable housing into the community. So, top of page 21, number three, we're doubly emphasizing it. But if you could just explain briefly the process, once the number does come down.
Sure. If I could, and as you pointed, you were pointing out what I was, the re-exam in a couple of places acknowledges the importance of affordable housing and planning for it. Right now, unfortunately, where we are with affordable housing, it's litigation. And much of that litigation is being done down in Trenton and the discussions by council and the planning board are legal strategies and they're in closed session. So you're right, it's not transparent. What is transparent though is, and this report talks about it, we did submit a plan, we held three, five different meetings on that plan that called for the creation of 450 affordable housing units, probably slightly over 1,000 total units. And that's what was submitted to the courts and that's the last thing that everybody saw. And it's been a long time. And it's been a long time because we're waiting for a judge in Trenton to make a decision and say, "This is the formula in Mercer County that you will use to determine what your need is." Once we get that need, it becomes a very open public process. Hopefully, we'll have time to have lots and lots of meetings. It depends what the court says and how quickly we have to act, but at a minimum, we have to adopt, the planning board has to adopt, a new housing element and a fair share plan. That housing element and fair share plan will include specific recommendations for new zoning to create affordable housing. It'll have either the ordinances or at least the sites and the density that are involved. And that's a public process and that'll be a series of meetings. The governing body also has to adopt a fair share housing plan and the zoning. So again, you'll have opportunities for public comment and public hearings at both the planning board and at the council. Each of the zoning recommendations will have a public hearing in front of council. They come back to the planning board for comment. So I think there will be robust discussion on the affordable housing and that's always been anticipated. It's just until the court makes a decision on the number, we don't know whether we need a new plan or the, the plan that we put out over a year ago, I think it is, is adequate. I hope that answers somewhat.
It does answer it somewhat, but I guess I just wanted to make a separate comment that I think all of those things really need to come together into an integrated plan and that it, it needs to be, in this master plan, looked at as a major piece of what needs to happen. That's all, really my point, is that this is a major thing that's happening in our town and to be passing a master plan and talking about the reexamination as if it's just one of many, seems like a disservice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marina Rubina, Corey Street, and I don't feel that I'm supposed to swear to tell the truth, because this is my personal opinion. And I would like to make a comment that I see a lot of comments in the reexamination report that talk about the number of teardowns and neighborhood character and loss of affordable housing that is somehow associated with that. And then in other sections, I see a lot of saying, "We don't have enough land," similar to what Valerie is saying, but there's nowhere the discussion of what this board has talked about and not affordable housing in large complexes and big things, but, and not affordable in a sense of co-affordable, but how do we revise our zoning with the missing middle housing? And we've had several meetings at council level, at the level of this board, where we talked about, how do we change zoning to make sure that the new things that get built are affordable, as in duplexes and secondary units or units that are built in the back or grandma apartments? I don't see any of this. And this is where the country is going. Everywhere else, people are talking about it and it seems like all of this reexamination, even the language is like 10 years old, right? So if you guys, when you're rethinking, just sort of think about not only the, of course we're going to have to build co-affordable housing and that's great, but we also need to think about the, the sort of smaller, more affordable, missing middle. And maybe it's just me, but I don't see any mention of it, zero, in this reexamination. And that's really sad, because it's been said in public comments time and time again. And on neighborhood, what neighborhood character is, is the people who live there and that is totally missing.
Can I respond? Because this was actually a comment that I made during the master plan subcommittee process. Actually, in section four, under housing, item two is to develop neighborhood conservation districts that balance preservation goals with competing priorities such as increasing the availability of moderate income housing. And item D under that is reviewing the types of permitted structures, including accessory apartments and two-family units. So it's in there.
Good, but I think that everywhere it says, you know, teardowns, big things, short of land, and one little common sense. But I think we should start modernizing the way we think about these problems, because we do this only, you know, 10 years and this is going to work for the next 10 years ahead. So let's use the thought process, at least of today, if not of tomorrow, so that we could lead ourselves for the next 10 years. Can we please trust you with that?
So, and also I would point out that under item H, Development Regulations, on page 22, number two, "Both communities' flat apartment ordinances should be reviewed to determine if they should be modified to encourage additional housing while studying potential impact on the character of the surrounding neighborhood." So it's in there.
We're getting there. Great.
Hi, my name is Tina Katiev. I'm at Dempsey Avenue and I state that this is-
You're going to speak right into the microphone, because we can't hear you.
...my opinion. What Zenon has said really resonated with me. I mean, this document that you have been working on so hard is a lot about the nuts and bolts, the mechanics of how we do things, but there ought to be something that informs- to encourage additional housing while studying potential impact on the character of the surrounding neighborhood." So, it's in there.
We're getting there, great.
Hi, my name is Tina Katiev, I'm at Dempsey Avenue, and I state that this is my opinion. What Zenon has said really resonated with me. I mean, this document that you have been working on so hard is a lot about the nuts and bolts, the mechanics of how we do things. But there ought to be something that informs where we are going with it. And if, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what I'm hearing, when you said, "Let us include as a basis that will inform and suffuse everything we do in this town." Let us include something like sustainability. Let us not put it in its own box, but let us make that the basis of everything we do. It doesn't have to be just sustainability, it could be social inclusion, it could be lots of things. But let's think about where we want to go as a town, and then let us, let that inform what we do. That's all.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Need a moment to think about it?
Can we respond, or can we talk?
Just hang on a minute, let's hear from the public, and then we'll go back to board discussion. Anyone else?
Sure. Okay, well, then I will close the public portion and turn it back to board discussion. Go ahead, Zenon.
Okay. Now, I guess my thoughts are more of like a process, you know, question. I guess in terms of my other comments, will I be able to, I guess, submit that to the board and to Lee? And then will we be able to review it again? Or do we have to vote tonight and then it's done, or how does that work?
Well, staff-wise, we were hoping you were going to vote so that we adopt this in a timely fashion. Where if we're going to reconvene, we're probably looking at next year then to adopt the document, which is beyond the 10-year time period. I mean, if you have specific changes tonight, it's not to say that if we want to entertain new zoning, we can always do that. This is just a guide, and it's listing specifics at the time. I'll bring back, like, I didn't know whether you were looking to change under I on page 22, if the rest of the board wanted to indicate that. A new or amended master plan capturing sustainability and resiliency issues in each element should be considered.
Right.
I, you know, we can make that change tonight and move on. If you had specific zoning, you know, we have some of those. I think we covered some of those. I mean, the neighborhood character study, that's what it's really looking at. It may not be as specific as some of yours were. But I think in a general way, it's basically saying, "Let's take a look at some of the zoning that we have." There's specific recommendations about looking at the lot area and bulk standards already in there.
Right.
If we need to clarify that, maybe we can. But I mean, my intent was, that's all part of that study that we're ongoing. The neighborhood character study was to look at some design features as well as some zoning bulk standards. So, in my mind, we had tried to address some of those. Like, I know you had a couple of other points.
Well, I mean, we don't have to go.
Urban agriculture, we don't have in it.
Okay.
And again, if that's a specific recommendation, we can. I would say if you wanted to do agriculture, unfortunately, other than one farm, we don't.
Well, we have two farms, I guess.
Two farms.
But, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't need to go into the details right now. I mean, I think that, I guess the two overarching points that I want to make, I guess if we're going to vote tonight, is one, including the consideration of a new master plan for the town. It doesn't have to be a new master plan, but the consideration of it, and to include that in the reexamination report. Because I think that, based off of my feelings, and I don't know about other peoples on the board and the public, it seems like that is the direction this town needs to go into. You know, I think that the document needs to be updated, potentially overhauled. And I think that there needs to be a community-driven process to create that. And I don't know if it's going to happen next year, or if it'll happen the year after that. But I think that that's something that we need to consider as a board, and there'll be further discussion about that.
Yeah, maybe I can, I agree with a lot of things you've said. I do think, just knowing how this year went, there was no way we could have sat down and done the whole master plan. And I'm sort of afraid that will happen all the time. But I agree with a lot of the things I'm hearing about maybe taking a look in the master plan committee sometime early next year, and maybe inviting the public and just sort of begin to talk about where, where we need to go with that. It might be laying the groundwork for an eventual one, but I'd like to see it start with us. I mean, it would have to be an outside, it would have to be a consultant to do it. And we've worked enough with the consultants, all of us have, here, to know that they come in with a set of preconceived ideas of their own. And it takes you a while to get everybody on the same page. But, I mean, if we have time, and maybe once we get through this year, we will have a little bit of time, we could have a kind of freewheeling master plan committee, invite the public, make good communications to let them know, and just get a start on what you're talking about. I know that you're working on sustainability issues with the PEC, but there are a lot of things in there that, that having a lot of different people looking at them and getting, I mean, just today's stuff has come up that I'm sort of jotting down frantically. I don't know how that, how people would feel about that, but I'd be willing to.
Great, thank you. And I guess the other thing that I would like to, an overarching thing, not, you know, I guess the details, because we can always hash out the details later, but, and make amendments. But I think that, well, I guess, one thing that should be clarified, that the PEC is working on the green building and environmental sustainability element, which I guess it was a different name in the reexamination report. But also to evaluate, or I guess assess, the whole entire master plan for sustainability and resilience, and to see how we can incorporate that in the upcoming year.
So those both seem like concrete suggestions that we could adopt right now. One, to consider a new master plan, and two, to look through the whole thing and incorporate sustainability? Are those the two suggestions, right?
Yeah, that's.
I thought I suggested that, if you didn't like the language, please reword it. I mean, "I had a new or amended master plan containing sustainability and resiliency issues in each element of the master plan." If you want to wordsmith it, please.
No, that sounds good.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Just one comment, this is a reexam report, but it's not a limitation. You know, and it ties right into what Mrs. Omen talked about. We can talk about anything in the master plan anytime.
Yeah, exactly.
And maybe this is the right time. The other side of it is, we do have a legal requirement to have a reexam report.
Yeah, I understand that.
Not to say that it's just a formality.
Yeah.
This has been worked on by Lee and the committees, and that's the process, and.
Yeah. I just didn't have an opportunity to say this before, and I felt like this was a good time to mention it, so, all right.
Ms. Gunning? David? Just one very specific, I wanted to respond to Ms. Haynes, and thank her for pointing out that the 2007 master plan had that 25% target for open space in it, because that's not something that I was aware of, or that had come up during this discussion. And I am concerned about that trade-off with, between the open space and affordable housing. In the master plan subcommittee process, I had actually proposed an edit that was not accepted. But I'm going to put it out there again for the rest of the board to react to, especially in light of Valerie's comments. And that was in section 4F, under the Open Space Recreation and Conservation element. Item three.
Wait, what page?
Well, I, yeah, I have an old copy that's marked up, so I'm, I'm not sure of the page, but it was on 21 on mine. I guess it's 22 now. So item three said, "Identification of additional areas for small parks, public gardens, and additional linkages to municipal parks should be undertaken." And I had suggested striking that because I feel like we already have a lot of small parks in town, and that leaving that language in leaves an opening for people who are opposing. And I'll give you the specific example, the Franklin Avenue parking lot. You know, people are already advocating that, "No, that shouldn't be developed for affordable housing, that should be another neighborhood park." And I think that this language, you know, is giving them ammunition. So, I'm putting it out there and see what people think.
Well, I definitely have an opinion that we should leave that in. One of my reasons is that, in general, our open space acquisition benefits wealthy people. It benefits everyone because we have it, and it's really good for the environment. But almost all the neighbors of our open space are usually huge houses with big lots. And they, when those houses, their property value immediately goes up, because it's always great to have open space right next to you. And I don't, I don't think we should preclude small houses in small neighborhoods and modest neighborhoods from having that same benefit. And I feel like it's almost an equality issue. I think we should preserve little pockets of green space where we can in our dense neighborhoods.
Yeah, and I guess I'd come down a little closer to David's point of view. For one thing, I think although we may have 27% of public open space, if you add private open space into that, there's a lot more. And we've got a small town.
Well, so I agree that we should not be buying big tracts, but small.
All I'm saying is, perhaps we could put something in here that suggests that we weigh carefully the, any acquisition of new space, and.
Well, isn't that two, though? A review of Princeton's open space policies, goals, and objects?
I think.
Well, it says to maintain existing facilities. I think maybe, and. And. Potential for other needed development. Community benefit. Yeah, something like that.
Something of that nature. I think we'd get closer to what I would be. I don't want to close off the issue. On the other hand, I do think that we need to be somewhat more moderate, because I don't think people use parks the way they did even in 2007. And while I believe in open space for a lot of good reasons, we've got really a lot of competing needs coming up over the next decade. So, I think we are going to be very careful.
Jenny, do you favor having a park on the Franklin Avenue parking lot?
Well, what I want to say is, now I have two grandchildren, and so I go to parks. And we definitely, there was no space, there's no space in the parking lot at Marquand Park on the weekends. I mean, there are, people are using those parks, so.
I guess, was the suggestion to add language in F2?
Yes.
After maintain existing facilities, and to accommodate other community goals?
And balance? Would balance be a good word to throw in there somewhere?
Where?
Where?
I mean, what we're doing, it's a review of policies and objectives to balance instead of in light of?
Balance the need.
Yeah, I think that would probably get close to what I've been thinking about.
You have that, Lee?
Wait, that doesn't really make, make sense. Balance the need to maintain existing, it doesn't really do what you want. I mean, I'm not saying that.
Two would now read, "A review of Princeton's open space policies, goals, and objectives should be undertaken in light of the need to maintain existing facilities." And then is it "and" to balance other community goals?
Okay.
You could even say.
Or could you say housing goals, or?
I'm sorry, Julie, what?
Could you say housing goals instead of community goals?
That's up to you. I think that part of what I saw as, and it's been part of it in the past, there are competing needs for everything, whether it's commercial development, institutional development, housing, open space. There are, as Valerie pointed out, some conflicts there. Maybe we need to refine at some point how we state that, because there are open space parcels recommended for acquisition that aren't appropriate for affordable housing. They may not have sewers, they may have steep slopes and wetlands, and those kind of things. And that's sort of how we evaluate it. I don't know whether the document does a good enough job of saying, "That's how we balance it." But throughout the master plan, I think you all find, there is a balancing that goes on. Maybe we don't say it directly, we talk about the balance and the competing needs. And at some point, I think Gail has a good suggestion, if the master plan committee wants to meet and start talking about those and seeing where we need to point them out, or discuss them further, and refine them. But you get that with historic preservation as well. Are we preserving something, or are we going to let it redevelop, whether it's an adaptive reuse or a tear down? So there's a lot of that competing need. And open space plays a part in that. That's why I thought Alan's suggestion about balancing other community goals made sense, because it's not just housing. But if, as David was saying, maybe it is just housing, then say housing. But I think there's more than just housing.
So, we're adding that to two and striking three?
No.
I think, you know, the thing I would miss if we took three out is this idea of linkages. That this is, this is something that the open space.
I vehemently disagree with that. I think people deserve a little green space, just like the.
No, she's saying she's, we keep it in.
So you don't think we should take it out?
No.
Okay, sorry.
If I can, so there are really just two changes. The one we just talked about to F2, where we're going to have "and" to balance other community goals, and then under I, other changes, adding something about a new or amended master plan with sustainability. Those would be the two changes so far that I've identified that you've asked for.
Yeah, I think these are longstanding goals of the community, and the open space preservation. I mean, God, we've been, it's been at the forefront of our thinking for at least the last couple of decades, maybe more. And to simply, more, okay. And maybe to just sort of suddenly revise that strikes me as a little too, too much too soon. But I do think adding some criteria to it that would suggest thinking hard about when it's worthwhile doing and not, is worth thinking about. I don't know, what do you guys think down there?
I didn't catch that.
I want to know what you and the environmental commission think about that.
About, no.
What we should do on that issue.
I didn't catch the, what you were, the question you're asking.
The question about modifying the, suggesting that we seek ways to find additional open space by adding something to the effect of finding a balance with other community needs, or.
Yeah, I don't really have too much of a comment on that.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that, you know, obviously, we want to make sure that everybody has access to open space. We should do an assessment, make sure that, you know, everybody's within walking distance. Yeah, I didn't really, I don't have a comment in terms of methodology.
Okay, if that's it for things to be added to this, I think what we need is a motion concerning this resolution, which we should have in front of you and...
I'll move the resolution to adopt.
You'll move the resolution?
Yeah, the examination report with the two edits I just discussed.
Is there a second on that?
A second.
Okay, this is, has we moved and seconded all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for everybody who came for that part of the meeting. I've had a request that we take a quick break before we move on to the circulation element. And so let's take about five minutes and then start in on the circulation element. Now, Gail, I was on the open space committee in the late 60s. And when, and as members died off, they left me their stacks of deeds. Yes, sir. Okay. Sorry, usually people come up and complain about my accent and write, they write me letters about it, my accent. So... Never leaves his on, never noticed. You don't, you don't like linkages, do you?
No, I do. I think...
No, it's the linkages that I think that the, the friends at Princeton Open Space, all these other groups have been telling me about.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, so...
No, 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 I don't want to take any of that out. I just, I kept thinking about the little area on Harris Road.
On where?
Harris Road. We spent so much time there.
Yeah.
I think this is going to be lively enough.
Such a surprise.
He had an egg in his day.
It's one way, it's one way.
Such a great...
This is, God reminds me of, certainly I do.
Yes, but not the Eisenhower, the New Watcher.
I don't know, we'll see.
David, I'm sorry, I got so, got hot on the power.
Did we have a program?
Yes.
And...
That's...
And...
I think it's, it's, it's not during, during school hours, we can't go to the playground and...
They're scared of us.
It's awesome.
I mean, yeah.
I mean, I think that, and I think that people, um, living in those, I think they're kind of happy with what they have.
I don't know, we'll see.
David, I'm sorry, I got so, got hot on the power.
Did we have a program?
Yes.
And...
That's...
And...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
Such a great...
This is, God reminds me of, certainly I do.
Yes, but not the Eisenhower, the New Watcher.
I don't know, we'll see.
David, I'm sorry, I got so, got hot on the power.
Did we have a program?
Yes.
And...
That's...
And...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I don't know, we'll see.
David, I'm sorry, I got so, got hot on the power.
Did we have a program?
Yes.
And...
That's...
And...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's...
I don't think we're going to get our number.
Yeah, I do too. I think, I think it's really a problem, but I gather that we've got people who are defending it in that shape. And did you know this is... I think how upset she would be by all of this, shake that thing. They took it off. It's sitting there. The works. It's not her, food truck, it's her by the, by the food truck. For years, years. And still do. Well, if you want to come up and say that, you can say it.
Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to mention that people in the audience were saying they couldn't hear us. So talk loudly and directly into your mics.
Well...
And ask people to come forward.
Yeah, they should always sit in the background. All right, if we, if we could come back into session, we're going on to the second element of the hearing, which is the circulation element. And I have been asked to announce that we can't control the noise of the air conditioning, which comes between us and the audience. So I'm going to ask all of the board members to speak directly into their microphones. And I'm going to ask members of the public, when we get to the public portion, to come up to the microphone at the podium. You know, you could move forward. You don't have to sit that far away, too. But, you know, if that's really too difficult.
That's much better.
I'm not sure that makes a difference in moving up.
All right. Mr. Sello, do you want to start us out on this? And then I think Ms. Ullman has spent a lot of time working on this. If you have things you want to add to Mr. Sello's report, you could chime in. Mr. Sello?
Thank you. As many of you know, the planning board has been working on this update to the circulation element for over a year. We began, I think, by focusing on expanding the bicycle section of the circulation element. We had a consultant, Parsons Brinkerhoff, who drafted up a bicycle master plan. That bicycle master plan was guided by a lot of folks, but specifically the Bicycle Master Plan Study Advisory Group, which was made up of planning board members, the town's pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee, the town's traffic and transportation committee, representative from PEC, and a representative from the public schools, and then some private individuals as well. As we developed the bike plan, we recognized the need to also expand the pedestrian section of the circulation element. We received input from the town's complete streets committee and the public traffic and transportation committee as well on both the bicycle element and the pedestrian element. And finally, I'd like to thank Deanna Stockton, who's joining us, the municipal engineer, who also provided input on both the bicycle and pedestrian elements, as well as, as we'll go through and highlight just very briefly, the vehicular circulation improvements were also updated. Before I begin a quick review of the circulation element, I particularly want to thank the board's master plan committee for the input and guidance and drafting this update. It's been a long haul to get here, but I think we have what's a pretty good document. I think most people, may not make everybody happy, but I think there's been some good compromises and everybody got something out of it. I should point out that, again, this hearing was publicly noticed in local newspapers and copies were sent to Mercer County and all the surrounding communities as well. The planning board held a work session on this update back in June of this year. At that meeting, a number of residents from the Springdale neighborhood, many of them are here, I think, tonight, appeared and requested that the board remove the extension of West Drive from the master plan. The board then directed the master plan committee to meet with the neighbors and discuss their concerns. The master plan committee did meet with the neighbors on October 11th and heard a number of concerns regarding the traffic impact to the Springdale neighborhood if West Drive were extended to Springdale and out to Mercer. There was also testimony regarding the environmental impacts the extension and traffic would have on the wooded area at the end of Springdale and specifically on the Rogers Wildlife area. Based upon the testimony that the master plan committee heard, it's recommending tonight in the circulation element document that the West Drive extension be removed. So you won't see it in the document if you go looking for it. We did remove it. What also came out of that meeting was a request to include something for bicycling along Springdale and West Drive. We did amend the circulation map, which are on the walls, and if we need, and include it in your packet. And I can put some of the maps up on the screen if you need me to. But we did include some enhanced bicycle facilities along Springdale and then extending out to West Drive. The draft before you updates and expands the goals and strategies of the circulation element to include additional goals and strategies for bicycles and pedestrians. Those are found primarily on pages 44 through 50. Excuse me. We updated our roadway design and roadway classification, and those are found on pages 52 and 54. We updated our complete streets section, pages 54 through 57. We had a complete streets policy in the master plan with the work of Deanna and some of the other advisory groups. We've updated that and expanded it slightly. And we've significantly expanded bicycle and pedestrian improvements. There are new maps in this document. There are maps B1 and B2, which show the proposed bicycle network. We've also included appendix B2, which provides a detailed description of the improvements. The map was also, at the request of Princeton University, amended to include the proposed Princeton University Bridge over Lake Carnegie, so there's a flyover on the map as well. A new map C is included in the document that shows all the proposed sidewalk improvements. It's a map showing both existing and proposed sidewalks. Minor modifications were made to the suggested road improvements. Primarily on those pages, we've updated things where we talked specifically about different roadway improvements. Mostly, we removed the ones that have been accomplished. We didn't add a whole lot of new in that area. We've updated a little bit of the transit section the same way. Bus routes that are no longer serving the community were removed. New bus routes, more discussion on the freebie and the university transit system were included as well. I'd like to just go over a couple of clarifications that staff would like to discuss and recommend as minor modifications to the map. It was pointed out to us that in appendix B2, there are two maps labeled C1 and C2. I believe we sent out a, something to the board on this, which were not updated. The maps C1 and C2 were prepared by Parsons Brinkerhoff, and we didn't have the ability to directly change those. So what we'd like to do is on page 58 on the fifth line, modify it to indicate that the maps B1 and B2 are the bicycle master plan and represent an update to the bicycle master plan maps C1 and C2 because those maps have not been updated. So we'd like to request that as more of a clarification. Also, and I apologize, this was my error, at one of the master plan committee meetings, it was pointed out that under, on page 53, under secondary arterials, where we list the functional classification of our roads, we had Valley Road, excuse me, as a secondary arterial. That should really be Cherry Valley Road. Valley Road is a major collector and it's listed just under that as well. Those are the staff changes and hopefully just clarifications that we would like. You all have the report. Either Dan or I can answer your questions. Again, tonight is a public hearing and we're anxious to hear from the public as well. But I think first, maybe we can take some comments or questions from the board. I know a couple of board members had some additional items they wanted to discuss, and now would probably be an appropriate time. So with that, Wanda, we'll take board questions if there are any for the staff.
Okay, board questions. David?
So now is the appropriate time for me to make my comment, which was that there are a couple of locations, I believe, that mention the intention to reconnect Province Line Road through the bridge over, is it Stony Brook? Yeah. And it's my understanding that that's obsolete language, that, I know the bridge has been repaired, but it's not open to automobile traffic and not intended to be. And I just, it was more of a question than a specific request for a change, but does that, does that intention still belong in the, in the circulation element to allow cars through on Province Line Road?
Well, this was, this was a sticking point three years ago when the circulation element came up and was thoroughly discussed and somehow it was left in. Each time it comes up, it could be, it can be discussed and a decision made about it.
Okay, that bridge is the property of the county, though, correct? It's not a municipal bridge? And it currently, it's recently rebuilt and currently does not accommodate automobile traffic, or can it?
No, it's, it's not up to the weight.
It was not designed for, yeah.
Well, it was, but it's not, it's had a lot of problems, it had fire and so on, so... Are you recommending that this, that these recommendations be taken out or, what do you want to, you have language?
I, I mean, I would be happy to see it reopen to automobile traffic. I don't, I really was bringing it up as a question. It was my understanding that an agreement had been reached not to do that. So if you're telling me that that's not the case, I'm fine.
Wait, who had agreed not to do that?
Pardon? Pardon?
Can you repeat? I didn't hear what you just said.
I was under the understanding that some agreement had been reached not to put car, automobile traffic through on Province Line Road.
I don't think either Deanna or I are aware of that as a formal agreement.
I don't have a problem leaving the language the way it is. It was really a question.
Anyone else? Any, any of these specific items? Jenny?
Yeah, I realized, and I also apologize for doing it now, but that we didn't, I think parking is an important aspect of both trying to reduce car, you know, trying to entice people onto public transit and reduce vehicle trips and all of that. And in fact, the university just adopted a, kind of a radical plan to use parking to incentivize more carpooling, et cetera. So I'd like to add just a sentence about that in the sustainability element, I mean, in the sustainability paragraph.
Which is where? Where is that?
Um, want to guess at the page or the numbers? Uh, okay, sorry. Yeah, and there's like bullet points or something? And you, and you probably won't agree with what I want to write, so. But something to, address the invisible subsidy to driving that by reducing or eliminating free parking on public streets. But you probably want to change it to something like, consider.
Jenny, isn't that, doesn't that constitute an issue that we should be giving additional discussion and thought to?
Yes, that's why I'm bringing it up.
We can just pop it into this element without.
Is this being discussed by council?
Okay, um, okay, well then, what about, consider the impact of our parking strategies on, our parking policies on traffic sustainability and their, and its impacts on traffic sustainability and walkability?
And streetscape character? I would add as another consideration, because surface parking.
Yeah. Did you get that, Lee?
Yeah, I'm not quite certain what you're under. I mean, we can do something about. What I'm wrestling with, I understand where you're going. I don't know if I have the language, because you were talking about free parking on our streets.
Well, no, no.
You have to pay for parking.
Yeah, take that back, that's too radical, I get it. But just say, consider the impact of parking policy on, and David had to rest.
Well, wait a minute, maybe, maybe, Lee, you should define the issues between making editorial changes to this, which we can approve tonight, and making substantive changes that will require us to withdraw it and pass this. Consider this at a later date.
Okay, that's why I'm just, I'm just saying, consider parking policies. I mean, if you don't think we should, I mean, if we don't, don't you think we should consider parking policy?
Someday, maybe. Is, aren't you about in the middle of a parking study that will affect this when it comes out? Isn't that, isn't the council doing a parking study?
Parking, it's doing a parking study for a limited, you know, area and for a specific purpose of economic development. It's not really, so, I think it's part of the circulation element. If we're, if we're talking about enticing people out of their cars, if we really mean that, don't we? Parking is considered, I mean, everybody knows that parking is one of the issues.
Council has had any number of long discussions about parking, but I don't believe we've had them here in, at the Planning Board. And I guess I've just, I mean, I'm happy to have it, and we can delay this to do it.
So you don't even think we should put in a, a simple sentence that says, "Consider parking policy"?
I think you can say, "Consider parking policies." I would, I guess, that would be defined.
And their impacts on, their impacts on sustainability?
If you start aiming them towards some issue, it seems to me it deserves a public discussion.
Can we have that now?
And what, I guess we should, if we're going to go there, there's a lot of, I mean, it's not clear what parking policy means. Is that about cost? Is it about providing parking? Is it about the hours of parking? Is it about, oh, I mean, there are a lot of, so, I mean, I think we're going to, if we're going to talk about parking policy, we really have to be more specific or should be more specific if it's to be meaningful.
Excuse me.
And I guess, we can, we can always, if that becomes a topic that the Board wants to deal with or governing body wants to, it, the master plan doesn't limit that discussion. It can be done without conflict with the master plan. So the master plan doesn't have to be the catalyst for that discussion.
Okay, I mean, but it says things like, encourage the use of alternative fuel vehicles by the municipality. You know, that's a pretty, I mean, there's, the whole thing about promoting sustainability, I just think it's a big gap if we're not talking about parking and that, specifically there.
Can I add to the parking issue? I lived in the Jackson Witherspoon neighborhood, and at Merwick Stanwyck, we have so many people that park there and walk into town, where we can't even have a park when we go home. You know, and then it's, you can be downtown, which we call the Jackson Witherspoon neighborhood is downtown. You can see where people walk all the way down there to park their car to walk all the way in town. So, yeah, we have a major, major parking issue, but if we, there is no incentive, like even at Merwick Stanwyck, you can't really ticket, because they don't have the, an ordinance to really ticket a car, to tow them away for parking there. I don't know what, what they need for that. But they let us know, they can't really do anything about it. At best, we can put a little sign on our car to say that we live there. But all they can do is put a little sticker on your car and say, "You're not allowed to park here." But that's it. But that still doesn't solve our problem.
It sounds to me like, like a parking discussion is long overdue for the Planning Board, but the question is whether you want to work on language for this tonight or whether you want to defer that.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I don't see why we can't, you know, incorporate it tonight. I mean, if people don't feel comfortable incorporating it tonight, that's another story. But, I mean, if it's a policy statement, then that's simply what it is. It doesn't really have any, you know, you know, teeth or grounding. I mean, it's, it's just, you know, something that we can refer to potentially with, you know, site plan review or, you know, land use changes. But I don't, I don't think it's that big of a deal. But, I mean, that's something that we can review potentially, you know, an upcoming year when we're doing an assessment of the sustainability aspects of the master plan, but, yeah.
I, I think I would like to suggest that we defer this just because we know with the results of the parking study, we're going to be coming back to the issue of parking. And I think I would love to address the sustainability aspects of parking at that time, but I don't want this meeting to get sidetracked, you know, from the primary goal of getting the circulation, the bicycle mobility item addressed, so, if we could.
Well, I'll just make one more pitch for what seems to me not controversial, but consider the impact of parking on sustainability? You know, is that too?
That sounds good.
Is that too, you don't want to do it?
No, it's just, it's a little too vague. I mean, the car could sit in the garage or your driveway would be parked, and the fact that it's parked probably is good for sustainability. It's when it's moving or doing things that it's not. I mean, I, I would say that it's probably difficult to really put succinctly into this, but I wonder if we could.
Well, I really vote to reserve this discussion until we have the parking study that you're working on and, or recommendations from council, and then really talk about it. I think putting something that is sufficiently vague to be misinterpreted into the master plan is, um, sorry if you can't hear me, everybody, is a mistake, because, as you know, applicants use the master plan, whether it has been ordnanced or not, as a kind of justification for almost anything. And so, not to be pretty careful about what we say.
But that's exactly why I think we should put it in, because I think we should be looking at sustainability.
We don't know what it is about parking that you want to say. I mean, parking, as several people here have pointed out, it's a, it's a hot issue everywhere, on every street. And do we want more people to park? Do we want more people to park in a specific place? Do we want fewer people to come to town and park? I mean.
Can I just say again, because I've always been raised that Princeton is a pedestrian town, but it's generally a pedestrian town for the residents. But when you're flooded with out-of-towners to park, to be, to walk around your beautiful town, that poses a huge problem for the residents and the people that want to come in and enjoy your town.
Okay, well, I'll let it go.
Anybody else? Yes, Tim?
I'm wondering, can we strengthen the language a little bit on, on page 61, under the, so it's under local road improvements? Even though Nassau Street is not a municipal road, under this section, Witherspoon Street and Nassau Street, signal improvement should be considered to improve pedestrian safety and traffic flow. Can we make reference to the need, as council has identified, for pedestrian-only times when pedestrians and, and vehicles won't be competing for the same piece? I mean, this is sort of, it says, improve pedestrian safety, but we know that there's a need at that intersection and at others for dedicated time for pedestrians to cross without traffic moving at the same time. And there's a term for that that Deanna probably knows that I'm, I'm forgetting.
Isn't it?
You mean, an all-pedestrian phase?
Oh.
Yeah, and if, if we're going to do that there, then we should mention Washington Road, the Washington Road intersection. It's desperately needed.
Agreed, I, and those are not, so we're on page 61. And about three-quarters of the way down, it says Nassau Street slash Route 27. Witherspoon Street and Nassau Street, University Place and Nassau Street, signal improvement should be considered to improve pedestrian safety and traffic flow. I'm, I'm proposing that we strengthen that language to mention the need for dedicated pedestrian.
So something along the line of considerations should be given to an all-pedestrian phase?
Yes.
Okay. I was, I thought Wanda had another spot where she wanted that. That's what I was referring to.
Well, that would be Alsa, Washington Road and Nassau Street, which isn't mentioned here.
I mean, it says Witherspoon Street, Nassau Street, University Place.
Oh, I see, we left out Washington Road.
Particularly in the view of fatality there, it seems.
And just FYI, the council passed a resolution asking, reinforcing our request or reiterating our request to DOT to do that.
I mean, I, I think we need to recognize that it is a, it is a state road, but I think it doesn't hurt us any to include that language and that we should increasingly go in that direction at major intersections.
Yeah, good.
Anyone else?
Yeah, on page 50, I just had another bullet point that I, and I will quickly, I will change, I mean, I don't care that much about this, so, I won't. But how about keep all traffic data gleaned from the "your speed is" signs? It's something that we've been trying to do, and it would just be helpful. We have those "your speed is" signs everywhere, and it's going to take a little bit of money to, to start keeping track of the data, but it would be enormously helpful to have that data, especially in a couple of years, you know.
So I think that first bullet point under information could just be, that could be added, you know, collected and maintain a database of existing multimodal counts, including data from all speed monitoring, you know, mobile speed monitoring equipment.
I think they're called speed cameras.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they're signs, those speed cameras.
Yeah. I call them "your speed is" signs, but.
That's descriptive.
I'm told it's speed radar signs.
Do those, do those collect data?
Yeah, they collect data, but it's. It's.
Just a question of whether this is the place for that as opposed to dealing with traffic safety officer and the police? I mean, they're the ones who are doing it. The Planning Board isn't. So is it more a direction to the people who are? And what does it add to have it in the planning?
Well, it, it, it makes it a stronger argument to spend the money for it. That's what, I mean, isn't that?
Governing body, I mean, this isn't going to convince, well.
Okay.
It's what the Board wants to do, but I'm just noting that it could be accomplished just with the direction from governing body to the people who are obtaining that information to collect it and retain it.
You read another one?
Yeah, well, one was that the. The population number was from 2010, and in another, I think in the other, in the reexamen, we used the population number that was more current, and should we just use the more current population number?
You can, the reexam used information from American Community Service. I think that was 2015, which had us around 30,000.
Maybe just, just put it in parentheses, "American Community Survey," and you.
We can change it if you want. It was just old language that we were using before, but, yeah.
Anybody else? Right, let's open this up for public comment. And since there are a lot of you, I think we're probably limited to three minutes each. So would you come forward to the podium, speak directly into the microphone, give your name? Promise that you'll tell the truth.
There's an implied promise when one approaches the microphone.
I affirm I will be telling the truth as I know it. I noticed that in the.
Can you lift the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Give us your name, please.
In the plan for the bicycle plan, there are a lot of proposed.
Could you give your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, of course. George Murray, 961 Mercer Road. Been in the area for about eight years. I'm a father of a son here, goes to Johnson Park. And the, there's a proposed extension for the bike path in front of my house. Right now, the bike path ends at Gallup Road. And it's been proposed for a long time, but it never seems to be funded to actually be built. And I have spoken with Mr. Quinn by email about this six months ago, so. But there was a vehicular death on Mercer Street within the last year. And also, there's been an extension of the Lawrence Hopewell Trail. So that, that almost. So that, that almost makes it to the Chapin School. And if that bike path is extended, it'll almost make it to the Chapin School. And the Chapin School calls itself a Princeton school, so I think that that should take a higher priority than it's been given. Um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Nat Bodigheimer, 26 White Pine Lane. And I wanted to express my appreciation for the work done to include, for the first time, a bicycle pedestrian element in the overall circulation slash mobility element. Uh, I think that's a, it's a, it's a great first start. As the gentleman before me noted, uh, it's possible to have projects in a plan and not have them funded, uh, over time. And so, the one request I was going to make, and, and I also recognize that, that it's council's responsibility to, to, to fund and prioritize, uh, these kinds of projects. But I did want to suggest that an element that's a part of the complete streets plan right now perhaps be added to the, uh, to the bicycle recommendations. On page 56 of the document is a recommendation, or, uh, item O, under the purpose of the complete streets policy, and that is to establish performance measures to gauge success. And I wanted to suggest, uh, for your consideration, inclusion in the bicycle and pedestrian improvement section that begins, uh, on the following page, uh, under the recommendations, a recommendation that is with comparable language, uh, something that says that, uh, we will annually or regularly measure, um, the implementation of the bike plan compared to its vision as stated in this document. Um, and then obviously, it would be up to council to, to, to take steps that would move that along, but you would be tracking that regularly. So summary, performance measures, regular checking on progress. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, members of the committee. Carl Mayer, Battle Road, to the extent I'm giving testimony, I will aver that I will be truthful. Um, I just, well, I'll, I'll start with a brief anecdote. Many years ago, I worked for the, um, United States Senate Select Committee on Investigations, a bipartisan committee, chaired by Senators McCain and DeCansini. And at one point, when the, the senators took the, the young lawyers on the staff out for lunch, and they said, "Get one thing straight, when you work on a committee, you're never gonna get thanked." And, uh, I think I want to say tonight, I hope this is an exception to the rule, uh, as a, a member of the neighborhood adjacent to the, uh, the Institute and to West Drive, uh, on behalf of myself and the other neighbors who'd like to thank the committee, uh, for, uh, deleting the language, I gather it's on page 63 to 64, that deletes the language regarding West Drive, which is of, of course, of interest to the, the neighbors, but I think you've also done something very important for posterity, because what you're doing is you're saying that it's a priority to preserve the Rogers Reserve, it's a priority to help preserve the, the Institute Woods, which, you know, this, this committee and the governing body worked very hard on for many years to preserve that area. You're preserving the history, you're preserving the wildlife, you're preserving, um, wetlands. So all of that is something I think is very, that's very important that the, the committee has accomplished. And, uh, I would say more generally, in that one act of elevating preservation over traffic, uh, you're, you're, I think, setting the right priority for, uh, a future planning of Princeton. Because, um, it is what makes Princeton unique. You can have open space and, uh, still attract, uh, affordable housing, you can have preservation and, uh, still have people come here. There, what I would urge the committee, whether you are revising the master plan or doing a new master plan, is there are communities like Burlington, Vermont, which is run on 100% renewable energy, or Boulder, Colorado, which is very advanced in, in terms of preservation. All, those types of communities, I think you could learn a lot of lessons from those communities, and I don't know how, whether there's a liaison to them or not, but, um, there, there ought to be ways to incorporate those ideas. Some communities around the country, they just, they work with, uh, Amory Lovins, who runs this institute on local self-reliance in, in Boulder, Colorado, and not only improves the environment, but saves money. Uh, so again, I just, I wanted to say thanks. Uh, there was, there was one minor point I wanted to address, which I know some of the neighbors are interested in, and that is Eisenhardt Art, Eisenhardt Arch on, um, on the road, College Road, that intersects with Springdale. That, uh, you know, for many years, the university would send out fundraising letters with a photograph of the intact Eisenhardt Arch, and the, the alums in town were wondering, "When are we gonna see the intact Eisenhardt Arch that we're being solicited for?" So I think, uh, I think a lot of people in town and in the community would like to see that arch restored, and also to preserve the arch, and as a way of saying that, you know, that's, that's important to the community, and, uh, it's more important than, say, the, the truck traffic that goes through the arch. So thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I'm Mike Suber, a long-term resident of Princeton. I'm a pedestrian, a bicyclist, and an occasional motorist. I want to commend the planning board and the master plan committee for what I believe to be the best Princeton circulation plan ever produced. I've read all 25 pages. On page 58, it shows that there are 25 miles of off-street paths, and over 80 miles of But before we congratulate ourselves too much, let me remind you that pedestrian and bicycle plans have been generated in Princeton for some half a century. Not unlike some of these prints upon the wall, which appear to have been erected by a professional basketball player. In your current plan, it says sidewalks, bicycle paths, or shared use paths should be provided along all major roadways. Now that sounds wonderful. Shared use path is not unlike a sidewalk, it might be a little wider. In my activity with a transportation advisory committee some 20 years ago, I was aware of at least two very serious accidents that hospitalized bicyclists who were riding on such a path and were hit by a motor vehicle either entering or exiting a driveway. Wherever there is a path, not within the cartway, but adjacent to it, perhaps with a narrow median, such as on Mercer Street, North Harrison Street, and probably many others, the potential for collision between a bicyclist and a motor vehicle presents an extreme hazard. The circulation plan should reflect this. I have three questions, which I would hope the committee would address. To what extent does the circulation plan incorporate the recommendations of the Parson Brinkerhoff report? Are the, number two, are there important aspects of that report with which you disagree, and are therefore either omitted from the plan, or presented in a contrary way? And three, and perhaps the most important, what are the specific plans to monitor the before and after progress toward meeting the goals of the plan with quantitative metrics? These I hope you will address, and thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Kristin Applegate, Director of Community and Regional Affairs at Princeton University. I'd like to join with others to say thank you to the master plan subcommittee and to the staff who have put in much time and effort to bring the circulation element of the master plan to you for consideration tonight. The university shares with the municipality the goal of reducing dependency on the automobile by supporting programs and infrastructure improvements that encourage walking, biking, and use of mass transit. We have appreciated opportunities in recent years to work with the municipality to advance the mutual interest in promoting biking, walking, and cycling, and use of mass transit. Some of these projects have included improvements at crosswalks along Washington Road and Faculty Road, the installation of sharrows, and establishment of a bike share system that is expanding from campus to the town. Additionally, ridership on the Tiger Transit System continues to grow, and participation in our car and van pool programs has been increasing. At the university, we're very excited about plans included in the 2026 campus plan to construct a multi-use flyover bridge over Lake Carnegie that will provide a safe crossing for pedestrians and cyclists to travel between Princeton and West Windsor. This will connect with existing bike and pedestrian infrastructure, and we hope provide a catalyst to spur further development and extension of a truly regional bike and pedestrian network. We appreciate the inclusion of this planned connection across Lake Carnegie on the maps, and I'll point to the one in the center over there, um, that are included in the updated circulation, circulation element that you were reviewing tonight. Uh, we did note, however, that there is no mention in the text of the circulation element about the proposed flyover. And we respectfully request that the board consider adding, um, the following language, which we don't believe would, at this point, be a substantive change to your draft document. Um, we'd suggest that on page 58, under the section Bike Path Extensions, after the sentence about the path extending from the IAS to Market Fair Shopping Center in West Windsor, um, that you add a short sentence saying, quote, "Princeton University's proposal to construct a multi-use flyover over Lake Carnegie should be considered." And I'll give a copy of this suggested language to Eileen. Thank you.
Kristin, while you're here, um, can I ask a, a question about the flyover bridge and its role in possibly someday connecting to a safe crossing on Route 1 to go to the Princeton Junction train station?
Very possible.
Okay, so there, there are sort of, it's consistent with the values that, that the existing paths would be extended out to Route 1, sort of near where the current cross-country course is?
As I said, I think we look at it as a catalyst, an investment, to making that connection, to assume where that connection and crossing over Route 1 would be, that would be presumptuous for us to make at this point. But getting that safe pedestrian and bike crossing, um, over Lake Carnegie is really a first step and a first investment of making that next step. And we all recognize that trying to get a good, uh, connection, uh, from Princeton to West Windsor and to the Princeton Junction train station especially, is something that we're, we're all very interested in. So yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I, if I can just follow on that for a second, you know that there's a widening of Route 1 that's being anticipated and currently studied by the DOT?
Correct.
And I know that Princeton University is one of the parties that's...
Well, we own most of the land, so, yeah.
Pardon?
We own most of the land that they'd like to expand on, so yes.
So, um, I guess, you know, we don't have to talk about it right now, but we would like to have some kind of conversation, I guess the Bicycle Advocacy Committee or some group within town would like to have a conversation with the university to understand, you know, what you imagine could be done to create a, a safe crossing as part of that complete streets approach to the Route 1 widening, because that's, it's immediate, so we need to be thinking about it.
Good idea. And I, I would just, uh, add to that, the, um, the conversation now about, uh, basically a widening in each direction on Route 1 is the outcome of many years of conversation that a coalition of the mayors, which includes Mayor Lemper, um, it has included stakeholders like the university and the hospital, major employers, uh, that this conversation is the result of that. So, um, I want to make sure that you knew that Princeton has had a seat, Princeton municipality has had a seat at the table, um, and we certainly have mutual interest in making sure that, um, to the extent possible, um, that bike and pedestrian, uh, facilities get considered as this widening is, is considered.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Foster, uh, transportation safety educator for Greater Mercer Transportation Management Association. Um, I just want to follow up on two comments. Nat and I believe, and Mike both talked about performance measures. I'd like to encourage the planning board to consider one of the performance measures to be, uh, the number of fatalities and, um, severe injuries that have to do with crashes when you're considering your circulation, um, plan and its performance. And ideally, of course, the best number to have for that goal should be zero. Um, the idea of zero fatalities, um, and zero serious injuries is rather new in the transportation world, um, but it is actually realizable, and there are many places around the, uh, United States and in other countries who've adopted a policy to have the only acceptable number of crashes or severe injuries and fatalities to be that number zero. Um, just to encourage that performance measure to be, uh, considered strongly. Um, in addition, uh, we heard some talk about a path network and regional networks. Just FYI, um, my employer has released an RFP to create a countywide, uh, regional trail plan. Um, we are currently in the process of soliciting, um, bids from consultants, uh, to create that countywide trail plan, um, and that's just FYI. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here actually wearing two hats. Uh, one is as a resident of the Springdale neighborhood, uh, where we've been very concerned about the possibility of the extension of West Drive, and we're very grateful for the consideration to remove that language in the existing draft. Thank you very much. And of course, thank you all for all of the work you do. I have a slight feel for how much you do, but it's way more than what I get involved in with the bike committee. Um, on the bike committee, I'm the coordinator for Safe Roots to School, and this bike plan is of immense importance for school kids in terms of their safety, their health, um, their efforts in getting a reduced, um, carbon footprint and, or sustainability, as it's been mentioned tonight. And of, uh, another point, which is that the 10 or 20 minutes of exercise that they will get using bike paths that are free of car competition, so to speak, gives them an ability to focus better when they sit down in the classroom, um, for their school day. better when they sit down in the classroom for their school day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You know, I have to say something. Dina Cotio, I'm at 79 Dempsey Avenue. I would also add my thanks to all of you for this really momentous work. I think we are at the watershed moment, and incorporating bicycle mobility in Princeton's transportation plan is really an enabler to allow us to transition away from the single occupancy fossil-fueled cars that are wreaking havoc, that are partially contributing to climate change. And so I would like to learn from Mike's experience, and I would like to urge you to put a time limit on the implementation of this bicycle mobility plan, because frankly, I don't have 50 years to wait for it to be implemented, and neither do our children. The other thing, and I'm not sure if you are the right people to lobby this about, it is not enough to build bicycle and walking infrastructure. We must also maintain them. And in particular, I would strongly advocate for sidewalks and bicycle lanes to be cleared of snow before you do the car lanes, because, you know, we only have two wheels, and they're really skinny. So we really need a little bit of help. There are cities in Sweden and Finland where the bicycle use is reduced by only 10% over the winter, and the reason is that they start to plow as soon as there's half an inch of snow on those bicycle lanes. So I would really like to encourage you to think about that. Thanks.
All right. If no one else wants to speak, I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting and go back to the board discussion. There have been some questions asked and some comments and so on. So, Senator, did you have...
I guess I'll start. I know David wants to also, but I was just curious if it's possible to create time limits or, I guess, a schedule for these bike improvements. I mean, is that something that we can include? I know that that was in the plan, but I don't think we can include that in the element. And is that our jurisdiction? Question.
I don't know if we can really do that, because it's capital planning, which is done by the council, is what I thought.
I actually wanted to respond to Mike's comments in detail. First, your three questions about the Parson Brinkerhoff recommendations, whether they've all been included in this revision to the circulation element. And your second question about whether there was any disagreement with their conclusions. I'll take them together because they relate to the process that was used. Basically, what we ended up doing was taking their specific recommendations for the bicycle facilities to go on every street in town, along with their verbal descriptions of those improvements, so their map and their verbal description of the improvements. And those have actually been adopted wholesale as appendices to the circulation elements. So they're operational parts of the circulation element. We did not disagree with or strike any of their recommendations. There have been one or two minor additions, like the West Drive bike path, which was added by staff. And Lee was describing, you know, that process in his description of why the maps had different In terms of the metrics, you know, we have general language suggesting that we have metrics. I really appreciated Nat's suggestion that both a metric of new installed infrastructure, you know, by linear foot or by mile or whatever, should be tracked, but also metrics of ridership, and in fact, also automobile traffic in town, because one of the goals is to reduce automobile traffic, or at least to slow the growth of automobile traffic by switching to bicycle traffic. So it's not in here as a document, as part of the document. I don't know if, again, that's something that we want to suggest be added as those two specific things that could be measured. And as Jerry suggested, obviously, fatalities and serious injuries are already tracked. Whether we want to adopt the Vision Zero as the goal for serious injuries and fatalities is, I leave that up to the board. But I think those three types of metrics are the ones that we should be shooting for. And I'd be happy to see a minor, you know, a sentence added to describe those types of metrics in the section that talks about measuring the performance. And then the last thing I wanted to say was, in your comments about the shared sidepads, while I appreciate the danger for cyclists on those paths when they intersect a driveway, I just want to explain, I think, the rationale that Parson Brinkerhoff used in determining where they were going to provide shared sidepads versus on-road facilities. And I think it really centered around level of traffic stress. From their research and information gathering in town, what they found was that for most riders, and especially younger riders, never trying to encourage Safe Routes to School and so forth, that a shared sidepath where you're off the road is actually more comfortable. It's a lower level of traffic stress than, you know, a bike lane that's on the road that's not buffered somehow. And I won't get into the details of why it's difficult to buffer the bike lanes that are on the roads, but I think that was a large part of the reason why they weighted their proposed improvements more towards the shared sidepaths. And I guess it's a, you know, it's a trade-off that they, as professionals, used in their decision-making. We didn't feel that we should question their conclusions, since they're really the experts. Okay. Jenny?
Well, what about the arch? I mean, several people, I just think, I think we owe the people to, asked about it to...
Is Kristin still here?
Yeah, because I always wondered what happened. I mean, I heard a story that trucks kept hitting it, and so it just...
A truck hit it.
Oh, it was just one truck?
Well, a lot of trucks bounced off it. The major damage was done in 2003 when a food delivery truck hit the arch and made that unsafe. So the university took it down. I understand they have all the pieces of the arch, and probably it could be repaired. It just never has been, and I must say, it seems a little unsightly now. What I miss is the pedestrian door, which was boarded up at this time. People, that was used by bicyclists, and that is a very dangerous place for bicyclists to try to get from College Road and so on. So if we could ask Kristin whether it has a future?
Well, Wanda, after your commenting on the history, I will never counteract anything you say about history. I think in terms of the Eisenhardt Arch, up to this point, the university has thought about it more in context of what you all have described in your circulation element, which is a focus on bike and pedestrian facilities. And if anything, the location of the arch constrains that area from the consideration of how it might be improved for bike and pedestrian facilities. So when you say it should be considered, I think, you know, when you consider it, that's how we would consider it. Trying to encourage large truck traffic on that road is not something that the university would be trying to do in considering how the Eisenhardt Arch, what remains of it, might be. So I think it's in context and very much in keeping with what you have all described in considering how it might be moved over time. So I don't know much more about the history. I don't know where the pieces are. I know we have pieces of the arch someplace on campus. I can't tell you exactly where.
We know that this is not its first location either.
Correct.
Right.
Correct. So...
Is the university planning on reconstructing it?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Is the university planning on reconstructing it ever?
Not that I know of right now, no.
Okay.
But it's...
It is really weird looking.
Yeah.
I mean, it's funny that, because the university, everything is, so there's so much beauty everywhere. I just, one, it's just, yeah. I don't know. I'd have to...
That was not the topic for tonight.
Yeah, I think we're in context, in keeping with your conversation tonight, it's consideration as how, because you do talk about how that area from College Road out to Alexander could be improved for bike and pedestrian facilities.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, Tim?
I have a question about the proposed metrics and where the language would go in the circulation element. And also, are we promising something that we, so we're saying establish performance measures to gauge success, and David has, you know, has proposed that we talk about the square footage of road that's been improved, and then, which I think is easily done, but increase in ridership and decrease in car use. It seems to me that that requires, is that beyond the sort of everyday functions of the engineering or planning or anyone in the building? Would that require sort of a separate consultant, and what would the cost be? I, you know, I'm cognizant of the budget and don't want to set us up, don't want to put measures in that then, when the budget comes up to council, we're not able to deliver. So is it, are these realistic expectations to measure the increase in ridership and the decrease in motor vehicle use?
We would need to define it more specifically as to what areas are being considered, but we'd also need to look at what technology or infrastructure would need to be purchased if we were to do the counts ourself. We do have the Bike Advisory Committee, and perhaps we could lean on them to volunteer time to participate in some of those counts for us.
All right.
But from a staff perspective, I'm not sure if we have the manpower at this time to commit to it.
The one thing I would like to suggest was certainly, at least in terms of vehicular, you know, you can put one of those tubes across the road, you know, before, and I would suggest doing it on a rolling basis around town, where before a road is improved, you know, when a project is scheduled, that will include bicycle infrastructure, that you measure the traffic before the improvement's made, and then you measure it, you know, a year after and two years after. So for traffic, I think it's pretty easy. There may be some small cost. I know that the...
Well, that's those cameras do that. They count everything.
Okay. The bicycle usage is a moving target, because technology is evolving for measuring bicycle ridership. Right now, it's just moving, you know, I've been to the Bicycle Pedestrian Summit, Bike Walk Summit, New Jersey Bike Walk Summit, the last several years, and they've talked about the fact that this is starting to be something that can be automated by, you know, having a video camera and software that, but it's not, you know, it's not quite ready for prime time yet. But hopefully, within the next couple of years, that'll also be something that's available and not prohibitively expensive. So I think it makes sense to put it in as a goal.
Yeah. I would support that, then, given that there are sort of low costs and the Bike Advisory Committee members, if they're willing to participate in bike counts or traffic counts, certainly that's something that we can get behind.
Okay. So the language for that?
So David proposed that, so, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we put three measures underneath O here on page 56 that would involve the square footage or the amount of...
Linear feet.
Linear feet. Thank you. Obviously not an engineer. Of road that's been improved for, specifically for bike and pedestrian use, increase in bike ridership and decrease in car trips.
Well, change, I mean, optimistically decrease.
And then there was talk about Vision Zero. Were you proposing that we...
I guess I would put it out there, I mean, see what people's reactions are, but certainly measure of, measurement of death, fatalities, and serious injuries. I just want to comment in terms of whatever we say just become words in the plan. The real issue is the word, they're not self-implementing, so it's going to take somebody deciding to have that function assigned... Understood. And paid for. Understood. Okay. Senator, did you have something?
Oh, no.
Okay. Anything else? Now, Lee, what do we have?
Excuse me?
Do we have a list of...
Well, the amendments discussed where there were some staff clarifications, which I'm hoping were okay. The one we just talked about, which is on page 56 under...
We can't hear you, Lee.
Oh, on page 56 under O, establish performance measures to gauge success. We would add three things. I'm not certain I have all the language right. One would be linear feet of bike and pedestrian facility constructed. Two, increase in bike ridership on improved facilities. And then three was decrease car usage on improved facilities. Does that work? I mean, the language, I don't know. I'm open to suggestions.
I just think that the decreased automobile usage is, it's overly optimistic to assume that it will be a decrease, so I would say any change in automobile usage on the improved
Oh, a change in the beginning on page 43 will use the 2015 American Fact-Finding Population of 31,249. Under, on page, I'm sort of floating around. Let me get organized.
We can't hear you again.
Okay. I'm flipping through to make certain I have them all. On page 50, under Information, the first bullet would be amended to read, collect data, and maintain a database of existing multimodal counts, including data from all speed radar signs. I'm getting there, I want to make sure. 56, we talked about the changes.
Yes. Cherry Valley Road and the...
On page 58, the suggested... On page 58, the suggested language from the university under Bike Path Extensions for their flyway.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You had the one on 61 about the...
On page 61, under Nassau Street, Route 27, we will include Washington Road and Nassau Street. And then, at the end of the paragraph, consideration should be given to all, to an all pedestrian phase.
Mm-hmm.
Let's see. I think that may be it.
Is that about it?
I think that covers them all, unless a board member has something I missed.
Anything else? Anything else? And you had, you had the Cherry Valley.
Right, that was within the staff comments, there was the Cherry Valley instead of Valley Road, the correction to the B1, they added language on the B1 and B2 maps.
Okay. Is that everything? All right. Was there something else? Nope. There is a resolution somewhere. Is there a resolution for this? Okay, yes, there's a resolution for the adoption of the circulation element. Does someone feel... Could I move it, please? Yes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, carried. Since Mildred's not here, I'll move to a turn. Yeah. And thank you all for coming and sitting through many of these sessions, so, now, one of you has to move for adjournment.
So moved.
Okay.
A second.
All those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Alan.